Marnie Crouch present, and I note for the record that Matt Hamel and Bill Wheaton are not present. Okay, so the first order of business after roll call is to review minutes. And so have planning board members have an opportunity, have they had an opportunity to review the minutes? They're dated March 26, 2024, January 21, 2025, and January 29, 2025. Any discussion of the minutes?
Um, my name is spelled several different ways, so. Often on the same page.
Was that, was that in the minutes that were prepared for March 26?
So the 21st in the called order, I'm a thon instead of a than. And then.
Hold on, where's that?
And then I think it happens again.
March 29th, the same thing.
Yeah, it's under the called order, there must have been a cut and paste. It's better than what the Gloucester Daily Times used to do to my name when I was on the historic district there. They would write it in ways that was unpronounceable. Johanehan.
Oh, here, it must be here.
They have the worst copy out of here.
Oh, there, here there it is.
He's getting poor, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we have to go through and make sure your name is spelled right. So let's start with March 26, 2024. I had a number of edits to those minutes and it might be easier, easier if I just downloaded the minutes and made the edits. They were really stylistic. There, there really wasn't much of substance at all that I changed, except in the third full paragraph, under notice of public hearing. I think the last two sentences I changed. It starts, "They discussed," and I believe that was a reference to the board. So that should read, "It also discussed what the remediation be, should be if PFAS became a problem for property owners with wells." And then the last sentence I amended, "Providing town water to affected property owners was also discussed." And, and then the rest of the changes that I make, made were pretty much grammatical and stylistic.
Is this the, the March 26th?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so it, it.
I did have a couple of.
Yeah, and I, I saw your email.
Okay.
Darcy, so I could, I, I will take responsibility for the 26th. The other. Yes. The other two sets of minutes were in, in much better shape, except for the spelling of Jonathan's name. Usually he's impoverished, but in this case, it was a different kind of misspelling. So, um, so the only change, I know, Darcy, you may have had some edits. So in the first paragraph, under joint meeting agenda. Amy Quessell was talking and in the third line it says, "The AG also has the authority to enforce," and I said, "to enforce the law," under general laws, chapter 12, section 10, general enforcement powers. And then in the next, the next paragraph, I added a period to Mass House of Representatives. And, and then that sentence should read, the second phrase, "She asserted Hamilton should do nothing until the court cases have addressed constitutionality," whatever was trying to be said there, I fixed that. And. And then Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary, I, I provided the correct name. And then there was a reference to the state and I changed that to Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And then the date on the last page, the next meeting is scheduled for January 29th. I made that correction. And then other than that, it was capitalization, take it or leave it. So maybe, Mark, I could give you the minutes with my edits from January 21st. And then on January 29th, Darcy, did you have anything on?
Yeah, there was just on page one, under discussion regarding potential amendments to the zoning bylaw and zoning map. If you read one, two, three, four, four lines down, there's at the end of that line. For a second, non-protected ADU would.
Take that out, yeah.
Yeah, just remove the word would.
Right.
And that would solve that problem.
Right, and, and I just had another few things on this that I can give to Mark, very minor. So I will do that. And I, and as I said, I'll make the stylistic edits to the 2024 minutes. But I think we can go ahead and approve these minutes subject to, to edits.
Shall I make a motion?
Please do.
I move that we approve the minutes from March 26, 2024, January 21, 2025, and January 29, 2025, with the edits that we have discussed.
Second.
Roll call though, Bill Wheaton, for the record, he is now present.
Aye.
Thank you. Pat Norton.
Pat Norton, aye.
Jonathan Poor.
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Beth Herr.
Aye.
Darcie Dale.
Darcie Dale, aye.
Amel Dahlquist.
Amel Dahlquist, aye.
And Marnie Crouch, aye. And I'm going to give these. Okay, so unless anybody has any objection, I would like to just take the discussion of the state auditor's mandate out of order. And I, I think that the select board has made a determination to discuss this at their next meeting.
They're gonna have an executive session, Marnie, with the attorney. I was there on Monday night.
Right, right. I would just make sure that that was an appropriate subject for an executive session. You know, it's not like there's pending litigation, but if they're planning to discuss bringing an action in the Superior Court. That might be appropriate.
I, I just had a question also, is that something that the planning board should be involved with as well? Should that be a joint meeting, executive session?
I, I don't think so, because if you recall, I did a memorandum about what our roles and responsibilities are. And I, I'm absolutely supportive of the town requesting a mandate determination from the state auditor. If anyone looked at the three determinations that were issued, they are substantially identical. And that was Wrentham, Middleborough, and Methuen, I believe. So I would assume that, that we would get an identical.
Right.
Determination.
It would just be the fiscal impact would be different.
Right, and, and I think that, that, well, it's interesting, I looked at the law. And the Attorney General takes a different tact here. And I know Amel, Amy Quissell was of the opinion that the town should proceed with compliance with 3A. And interestingly enough, on Boston Public Radio, Diane DeSoglio, the state auditor, was speaking with Jim and Marjorie, and she was very supportive of 3A, but she obviously has a duty to comply with this mandate law. But she also thought that the law might have to proceed. But I actually looked at the statute and, and I'm open to, you know, it's, it's not, we're not gonna have a legal discussion here. But the language of the statute appeared pretty plain to me, and I will read it to you. And it says, "Any law taking effect on or after January 1, 1981, imposing any direct service or cost obligation upon any city or town shall be effective in any city or town only if such law is accepted by vote or by the appropriation of money for such purposes in the case of a city, by the city council in accordance with its charter and in the case of a town, by a town meeting, unless the general court at the same session in which such law is enacted provides by general law and by appropriation for the assumption by the Commonwealth of such costs exclusive of incidental local administration, administration expenses, and unless the general court provides by appropriation in each successive year for such assumption." So that speaks for itself. But I think that it's certainly worth the select board considering the cost. And I don't know if you all had the opportunity to look at the town manager's letter to the executive office. And so the, when it came to infrastructure, the, the focus was on water capacity. And I'm not even sure that water capacity is infrastructure. Capacity is capacity, you can have the pipes, but if there's no water to put in the pipes, that's not.
Yeah, that's natural resources, yes.
That's something else. So I think that it's really imperative that the town of Hamilton, hopefully joined by other communities, makes that argument. But just for the, my own edification, I, I looked at the number of dwelling units that towns, cities and towns in the Ipswich watershed have to build, the total. Given that the Ipswich watershed is the most distressed watershed in the United States. So if you just consider Hamilton, Wenham, Topsfield, Middle, Middleton, North Reading, Boxford, Northander, and Wilmington, the total is 5,639 units. If you include Ipswich, Beverly, Andover, Reading, and Burlington, those cities and towns draw a portion of their water from the Ipswich River watershed. Not all of it.
Right.
Just some of it. But in total, they're responsible for 9,254 units. So there's a substantial water capacity issue. And I happened to listen to some, you know, I was just researching. And, and Senator Tar was talking about the cost of a potential reservoir in Topsfield. Half a billion dollars.
Right.
The cost of tying into the MWRA.
Much more than that.
Half a billion dollars, whatever, you know, a billion here.
Half a billion here, half a billion there.
It's, it's astronomical, so.
Marnie, Marnie, in the case of Hamilton, why wouldn't the expense be far less than that? It would just be creation of a, you know, downtown sewage district and a tertiary treatment plant. That's not gonna be half a billion dollars, that's gonna be.
Well, no, but I mean, it's the water capacity. It's getting the water to the town. So if the town, it's the water supply that's the issue. It's not just running pipes, it's, it's actually having water in drought conditions.
Although Hamilton does have the North Coastal Basin and the watershed around Chabaco, there is some movement toward investigating, because Essex and Manchester get their water from there too.
So, but anyhow, that, that is, I think, a really legitimate.
Oh, for sure, absolutely.
It's not, it's not a not in my backyard issue, it's really.
I think Ipswich may have also included something similar in the comment period. I think I saw something with Ipswich talking about the water as well.
Right.
Because it's, it's a reality.
It's a reality, I mean, that drought last summer, I, I remember crossing the, the bridge on Asbury Street and looking west. And, and there was no river, it was just.
So there's a, on, on, on the 11th of March at Ferncroft, there's a discussion with Bruce Tar and Kristen Cast. If we wanna talk about Ipswich River watershed association. There's a, there's a meeting on the 11th at Ferncroft. You can attend in, in the State Center.
In the evening?
No, in the morning. It's during work hours, so.
Oh, interesting.
Right, well, so anyhow, I think that.
Which is ironic, it's at a golf course, by the way.
Lots of water.
You can't break it up.
That is hilarious. Do you, where, where can you find that information, do you know? To go to Bruce Tar's?
Why don't I forward it?
Oh, that'd be great, thank you.
Don't we still need to file a preliminary, some kind of preliminary plan?
That was done.
What?
I mean, there was a, the town manager did.
Send something in.
Send a letter to the executive office.
The town is interim compliant now with 3A.
Right, but the town.
And what did that plan show?
Good question.
It was a promise to work.
Like 10 questions, I mean, it was.
You just answered the questions that were on there.
But what?
We're no longer interim compliant, right?
Just for filing that plan, we became.
The February 13th dates. They filed for that February 13th date.
Wasn't an actual plan for the zoning. Yeah, oh, okay, I see.
So the town manager also responded to the executive office's comment period.
Yes.
For the regulations that were promulgated pursuant to the Administrators Procedures Act. If you recall, the Supreme Judicial Court in the Milton case said the guidelines were ineffective because they failed to comply with the Administrative Procedures Act. And there has to be, in conjunction with that compliance, some cost analysis as to the.
Yes, small, small business analysis.
Yes, and so the town manager did that as well. And so there'll still be a period of time, and I'm not a betting person, but we'll see whether the executive office amends in any way, shape, or form the regulations or responds to the proposed change to the regulation that Hamilton proposed. And, and I thought that, that what Hamilton did was, was good because it interjected into the regulations a provision that granted the executive office discretion to reduce the number of units that a town would have to theoretically zone for if certain conditions were met. So I, I think that that really exhausts this conversation. And we can proceed with, you know, a discussion of the Form Based Code unless anybody has anything really germane to add to the discussion.
What's that? Do you have a question? It was just a, it, it is a good segue to the question I had was three, the Form Based Code process got put on hold when 3A, pending 3A's Supreme Court ruling and everything else before, because we were waiting to see whether or not it's gonna be applied as part of the scope of the effort. And then it got put back on when the ruling was made that it was constitutional. And we said, "Go for the Form Based Code with the directive to include 3A as part of the scope of that effort." One of the major goals of the effort. And I guess now are we considering putting it out, should we be putting it on hold again for the same purpose?
Well, I.
Good question.
This is my take on this.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think that the town should adopt a Form Based Code, whatever happens to 3A. So if, at the end of the day, we have to comply with 3A, how that happens, who knows? I mean, whether it's a vote, that there are people in town that say yea to 3A, not sure that's likely. But, but, or if we're sued by the Attorney General and whatever. But putting all that aside, I think if 3A went away, we would still want a Form Based Code. If 3A comes into existence in some form, hopefully with a reduced unit capacity, the 3A would, uh, excuse me, I misspoke, the Form Based Code would be very protective of how the town would develop if there were multifamily construction within the downtown area where the Form Based Code would be. So I think it behooves us to just go ahead and get, get ourselves really up to, to speed on what a Form Based Code looks like.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, we're going to consider it with 3A or without 3A.
But, and I agree with you completely, because initially we were hoping to keep the scope without 3A and the Winthrop School as part of the effort to be considered. But based on your memo and the scope of what we have the authority or directive to do and influence, it's up to the town manager to decide whether or not that process, he is the one that changed the scope of the proposal. And the select board changed the scope of the proposal that was originally drafted to include additional elements that weren't originally there. And it's their process to manage whether or not the scope is, it's our responsibility to react and help shape the Form Based Code that gets developed, but not to determine the scope of what.
Oh, no, we're, right, right now, right now, we're trying to get familiar with the language of a Form Based Code.
Okay.
So that whatever comes before us, we will be able to evaluate it cogently.
Yeah, but we're spending a lot of time, it seems like we're spending a lot of time trying to shape it and talk about what it should mean and how to organize the district and whatever it is that we're doing. But it's technically still on hold, as far as I know, and I think.
I, I don't believe that's accurate.
What, which is, what's on hold, 3A or the Form Based Code?
When, the last time we talked, 3A was very much.
But, but.
It was clear that 3A was part of the scope of the effort.
Right, but UTIL is still drafting a Form Based Code.
Yeah, what, as Marc just said, there, there was an interim compliance letter that was drafted by town manager.
Yeah.
To the HLC stating that we'd like to meet your new, it's, we're, we're proceeding, good intentions to meet your now July 21 deadline, after which you're not compliant if you're not, if you don't.
Yeah, but I, on.
But, so that, that, and then the unfounded, unfounded, unfunded mandate came upon us. This looks like another decision by the select board.
Well, so on Monday night at the select board, they did not discuss the special town meeting. They took that off the agenda on Monday? So it, it does seem like.
It's not gonna happen?
It doesn't look like there's gonna be a special town, I was actually at the meeting.
Oh, okay, then, then.
So then, so that, and then the other thing, just that I've heard, I don't, I have not confirmed this, but I had heard that the HDC was concerned and they would really like to keep those two things separate still. They would like to keep the Form Based Code and the 3A separate, because they gave money to be part of the whole thing. So just that was feedback for somebody to check in and double check on that. But on Monday, they did pull that off the agenda for the special town meeting.
I don't think that decision's been reached.
No, they didn't, and no, I'm not saying they decided not to do a special town meeting, they took it off the agenda. They did not discuss it or vote on that.
Right.
That's pending the executive session meeting with the town council, correct?
Right, right.
That goes back to my earlier question, if I misunderstood you, Marnie, forgive me. I think you had earlier it said, you were wondering if it warrants an executive session, because we're not in a legal process right now.
Right, but that's, that's for town council, you know, if, if they make that determination, it's.
They may be, they may be discussing all the possibilities, including possibly, because somebody mentioned something about a court suing the state, there was a comp, somebody on the select board had that come out of their mouth. So I think that might be in the mix of all the conversation happening.
If there was an action to be commenced in the Superior Court, I mean, perhaps that is a valid subject. Robin Stein is a, you know, she's very particular about those types of matters. So I kind of pair at that as well, but.
And is that who they're meeting with, or is it Amy?
I, I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know, probably Amy, but be that as it may. So as I said, we're going to have a Form Based Code, one way or the other, so let's talk about it. It's, it behooves us to be able to, when we get one, to be able to say, yes, we understand what the goal here is. We understand the language that's applicable to setbacks and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, as a, as a select, as a planning board, we can also, at that point, will have input as to, you know, some, some of the provisions, I would imagine. So I, I think we should just go ahead and take advantage of this opportunity to, to talk about it a little more. I think we started to make some progress. We agreed that, that the, the buildings that, that UTIL had presented along the railroad tracks at the intersection of Walnut and Bay Road didn't resonate, it didn't resonate, I think, with the, the initial committee. And I don't think it resonated with anyone here. So I, I think, Jonathan, you were going to.
What, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to address Pat's question a little, just a little bit further. And I guess I'd answer that question with a question, which is, if the town has a desire to have a Form Based Code and HDC wants to separate it from 3A. And my understanding also is that if, for some reason, it gets voted down this year, if there's a special town meeting, it's voted down, we, another year, we get another crack at it, and then, then it would be totally separate. It would also be in a better context with what's actually going to happen or not happen with Winthrop School. So I guess my question to you would be, what do you feel is the disadvantage of, of trying to get up to speed on, on all of the, the components, the desirable components on Form Based Code downtown? You know, understanding that 3A might be in there, might not be in there, what do you feel the disadvantage of, of getting that head start would be?
I think the most important disadvantage is the financial responsibility we have to be efficient with the funding that's been allocated. to be efficient with the funding that's been allocated to the process. Designers love to design and will spend forever designing, uh, if it's left to us and, and that's kind of how that process works sometimes. But, you know, we were, we were given a specific amount of money to be efficient and effective with the process and I think it's our responsibility to be very clear with the scope of the assignment and what our expectation is with the, with the end result. And I don't think we've been, we've been anything but that. I've gone to the, to the meetings that, uh, we've had for the public, uh, participation in, in, in the development and it's, it's been not ver- and I think you guys both admitted to the fact that it's been really inefficient and disappointing, uh, up to this point. So that is, that is the disadvantage to plotting ahead and the, the advantage is obviously, you know, over time you can correct, things will get better the longer you have, but I think we've been given a very specific amount of money and we should be, we should be sensitive to that.
Yeah, okay, so that, again, good question. So, but Mike, I guess follow-up question to that would be, the planning board isn't spending town money in talking about it or responding to it. Um, and in fact, the more, I think, but you tell me if you disagree.
Yeah.
Um, I think that the more preparation and understanding and guidance and feat, specific feedback we give them, that I would think would build efficiency and effectiveness. So in other words, that's the, that's the question and task here.
Yeah.
So is there a disadvantage in the board spending time trying to get it focused, get it affi- effect, um, effective and efficient and focused on Form Based Code, not, you know, muddied with 3A compliance? I think that it actually is in support of your concerns.
I agree, uh, if UTIL are doing nothing in the meantime, we can, I, we had, I think there was a huge benefit and we've done some good work over a table with paper, uh, and, and Gordon Commonwealth is a great example, the work that you guys have done there was excellent. Unfortunately, it didn't come to fruition, but I think this opportunity we have, we should take the time to align ourselves with what the scope and expectation of the effort is and then tell them to start, rather than saying they're doing something that we, we don't have anything to react to, which is good, because it allows us to come up with our own ideas before having somebody else evaluate them. But, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't start paying an architect, uh, before I had a concept in mind for what I wanted them to do, I wouldn't have them draw on a blank sheet of paper, you know what I mean?
Well, we do, we do have, we do have in, information in front of us that we haven't reviewed. There's, from December, there was a presentation that we haven't gone through that's on the table from them.
Mm-huh.
Um, so the, the, the proposal tonight would be to use that presentation as a way to do exactly what you're talking about doing. So the question is, does that further your goals or does that work against your goals of, of creating efficiency and effectiveness in making sure that Form Based Code is the best it can be for the downtown?
A hundred percent does if UTIL have their pencil, if they have their pencils down. I think if they need to be told pencils down until we have the time to review, react, develop, finalize scope, and then they can start again, because it looks like from the schedule that's being proposed and from we're intending to do, that they're happening in parallel.
We can recommend that, but we, I don't think we have the authority to make that decision. What we have to do is we have to respond to what's put in front of us.
So can we make that recommendation?
That's a separate discussion, do you want to, should we discuss that first?
I agree.
Am I, am I off the subject here? I'm just trying, I'm trying to get to the bottom of what the, what's really on the table and, and as, as far as concerns, cause if we're, if we're not pulling the oars in the same direction, then we're, again, just going in circles, so.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that, uh, whether their deadline is for a June, if it does happen, town meeting or a November town meeting, we still need to understand what the Form Based Code is at some point.
Right.
We do have some time tonight, you know, given the schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so it, it, you know, if it's only a matter of when it's gonna happen, because we're gonna talk, we're gonna use, look at some case studies, what have other towns done to talk about.
That's what I'm interested in.
Uh, uh, lot or layout standards or, or any one of the five major things, public realm standards. So we're gonna look at something as not necessarily for Hamilton, but then we'll look at what UTIL has done at, at the end of the slideshow, if we look at the slideshow we put together.
Mm-huh.
Um, so we can see, well, what did other towns do, what has UTIL done, we can get start to compare them, compare them, talk, talk about them and then there might be ideas that come up that could get relate, related back to UTIL whenever they do. They've gotta be notified pretty soon about what the status is, cause they're shooting for, you know, uh, the, the deadline of a, a June town meeting, so I don't know where that stands now.
But can we make a recommendation that they stop working until we?
I would like to see it put off until the, frankly, I'd like to see it get put off until the fall, if it were my choice.
So you support making a recommendation?
To the Select Board? Is that who, is that who we would recommend it to?
The town manager or Select Board?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, the town manager answers directly to the Select Board, so I would go to the Select Board.
I wouldn't go to the town manager.
So the advantage.
I don't, sorry, and, and this is a good question, but I think, and, and by saying that, it doesn't mean that, I'm not suggesting we do nothing, I'm suggesting.
This is, this is not, you know, in, in a sense, you know, the planning board is, is not a signatory to this contract, okay? We, we can't really interject, you know, our beliefs. The way this was initially structured is that UTIL would conduct meetings, you know, present the, the basics of a Form Based Code and get ideas from the public. And as we all know, it got derailed with the vociferous opposition to 3A. So when, when they tried to, to do the presentation on the Form Based Code, there was always the, the, uh, the, uh, problem with 3A rearing its head. And then, of course, the pause was to see what happened with the Milton case. But UTIL was always charged with developing the Form Based Code and by that I mean not only the graphics that accompany a Form Based Code, but also the language. And so they're doing that and their job is to present it to the planning board for our review and recommendation. And when we review it, um, hopefully we will have the tools to, uh, change it in ways that would conform to, uh, a, a better analysis, for example, or, or maybe we'll come up with something based on what we learned that we can tweak their work product. But it's not the planning board's job to actually do the Form Based Code, we don't have the tools to do it. I mean, that's something you have to, you really do have to pay someone to do. I mean, yes, you could go and look at someone else's, uh, Form Based Code and try and make it yours, but really, that, that's, that's something you pay a consultant to do, that's not something that the planning board.
I'm not suggesting we do it, I'm just, I'm answering. But, but I thought Jonathan, at some point, some, some time ago, you'd mentioned that UTIL's not actually delivering a Form Based Code to us, they're giving us some recommendations or framework that we would work with.
No, they're, they're giving us a Form Based Code.
That we would accept or modify or just accept?
Well, that we would, we would comment on and then it would go to town meeting, so.
I think there was, I think there was even something, you correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we could give feedback to UTIL and they could alter it, so.
Very compressed, but yes, yes, that's the mission.
So, so if they present us with a Form Based Code, we want to be able to evaluate it based on what we learn and say, yep, great idea, but why don't you try this, I think this is.
Doesn't that then go back to Pat's concern, why don't we have them put on hold until we have something, guy, rough structure or understanding to recommend to them?
Well, we really, what we're doing here is to learn the language so we can do that. I mean, right now, um, if you look at all the samples of the, um, the, uh, Form Based Codes, it's really important, I think, that we know what we're looking at, that we understand what we're looking at, because we're going to get something similar to this and does everybody, can everybody look at it and then say, oh yeah, I think we should do this? I, we're, we're learning a new language here and I think it's up to.
So here's a, here's a question or suggestion, would it be appropriate for us to take a little bit of a poll with the board to see if we, if the board thinks it would be wise, if possible, to delay the Form Based Code process till the fall when it's clear what the relationship is to 3A? And in the meantime, while other parties decide that, cause we are not the deciders, we are proceeding on the schedule that's been laid out before us, um, which is a compressed schedule with very few public hearings with UTIL presenting the code. So we would, we, do we want to make a recommendation to the board that we, we think it'd be wise to wait, but we're proceeding in all good faith and haste? Question, I'm trying, I'm trying to listen to all sides here.
Well, our third option is, you know, not, cause the original idea was, those things were out of the scope of the effort anyways, so I agree, we need a Form Based Code and I agree that we need to proceed to develop one, but it may not be on the compressed timeline, it might be, you know, cause we have something, like you said, to react to, which we haven't reacted to yet.
That's correct.
So if we have that opportunity to react to it and implement and provide some comment, it probably makes them more efficient with whatever they do next, rather than having to go back and react to comments that they've already incorporated as part of the.
Yeah, they're, they're setting the schedule and I think if we were to proceed with a discussion tonight and come up with some ideas and information that we wanna pass on to them, uh, the more information we pass on to them, their end date is fixed right now, until that changes by, by the Select Board and town manager, as far as I know. We don't set their schedule, they say this is what we can, be what we committed to at the outset on this timeline. And the only thing we set is, well, we'd like to have a town meeting before summer and the latest date would have been the end of June, uh, before July, because then the town wanted to be able to say we're fully compliant if that is the wish of the people after the vote, to fully compliant with a 3A. But now if we, this discussion, we can keep 3A out of this completely, because you, you can just strip it out, it's, it's only a factor in a downtown. But this whole discussion should be about what a Form Based.
Right.
Code looks like, forget 3A, it's just, there are other things that we're not talking about, is that gonna be in the town? You know, how, what are the commercial buildings gonna look like, where, I mean, what, you know, those, those are the, we're, we're planning a town center is what we're really doing in this case. And the 3A is a sideshow and it's a bad one.
Well, it's, it's, it's up, but, but, but he just said also that it is the one thing that has been used to determine what the deadline is for the effort to be completed. Like we're taking it out of scope, but it's also the thing that's driving the whole timeline of the effort.
Yeah, well, it derail, the 3A derail everything from the start. What I'm saying is, uh, they have, they, they wanna listen to the planning board, what we have to say.
Okay.
They're on a fast track now, so they wanna, they, they're not gonna be here now until the first of April, uh, that's their plan, I'm gonna try to see if we can move that up a week or so for, get a meeting.
I, I think it really behooves us to, to talk about the Form Based Code instead of talking about.
Yeah.
Talking about it.
I agree, but I'm trying to get past, if, if everybody can only sit here and think about 3A, we're not gonna get anything done.
There is.
I'm trying to figure out if there's a way we can get it, get it.
And if you don't wanna talk, we can leave, you can leave the room.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna contribute anything, those.
I wanna contribute, but I think we asked a valid question, right? The effort got put on hold because 3A got put on hold.
This, this is about understanding, this is about understanding what a Form Based Code is, maybe it's not the one we're gonna do here, but this is to understand.
This is to understand it.
What's the composition, why, understand it so you know how it works, cause you're gonna have to administer it sometime.
Yeah.
And you're saying that UTIL's planning on coming to a meeting, is that what you were saying with April 1st, what was that?
Originally, they were gonna come, first planning board meeting is they're looking at April 1st.
Okay.
The first planning board meeting was originally, to be a couple of months ago with the planning board.
Okay.
So they went on pause and then they, it, to relaunch, it took them a little bit longer than they figured.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't know that that was something coming up, so.
And the problem is by early May, there has to be suffi- there has to be a code written. So you have.
Because we need to have a hearing, correct, yeah.
Public hearing, but you need the code fully developed and it has to be at least two feedbacks from the planning board. So they, they have a really short timeline to do this.
They might be happy with changing it.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I.
Depends on what happens with the town.
Again, it's not up to them.
Right.
It's not up to us.
Right.
So we can either be prepared.
Right.
Or we can be not prepared.
Right.
But, but we need to, we need to get past this discussion somehow.
Good, I think we're good.
I think we should not discuss, I think we should talk about the Form Based Code.
Let's do it.
Let's not talk about talking about it, let's, let's go.
So a question, question is, would it be useful to just bring the slideshow up from the last slideshow that UTIL presented, use that as our basis for discussion, we could just flip through it and if there's things that people wanna dig into, criticism, questions, concerns, would that be the most useful thing?
I think so, yeah.
Cause that, it's gonna be some form of that slideshow, the next slideshow and, and that's what will be put in front of us and the more we're prepared for that, the more intelligent our responses will be.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Emil, can you, um?
Thank you, Jonathan.
Uh, yeah, Mark, that's not the, let's see if I can get this up. Give me the, uh, I gotta do a share screen here.
Yeah.
And this is really the time, if you're looking at something and it, and something doesn't make sense, you don't understand it, this is the time to ask all those questions. There's no stupid questions, because we all need to be up to the same level of what we're looking at here. So I would hope that people won't be shy about asking questions or making comments or having criticisms.
Okay, there we go, this is the, this is their last public presentation, it was in early December. I just have a PDF on this, I don't have the PowerPoint, so.
Let's see, I'll just scroll in pieces.
You can skip over the 3A, this was the part in down. The only thing I will say, that there has to be a residential component in a downtown anyway, you'd want one, uh, just don't think of it as a 3A component, but a residential component. There just needs to be in town planning, a certain percentage, like thirty percent of it has to be residential. So, um, that was part of the hangup with the Advisory Committee that.
That, that's a, sorry, that's a requi- the thirty percent requirement is the.
It contributes to the vibrancy and the economics.
From a, a good planning perspective, not necessarily a law.
It's just a guideline?
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, it's a guideline for, in order to be a viable community, you need people on the ground.
Best practice.
Thirty percent on what?
Feet on the street type thing.
Thirty percent on what?
People living downtown.
Residential.
Of the buildout downtown should be residential.
By area, by building?
By area, yeah. Yeah, by probably gross square footage.
How, how much should be residential?
That doesn't mean.
Thirty, thirty percent.
And seventy percent of the business district should be business?
Well.
At least thirty, it sounds like.
There should be three, at least four components, there should be a civic component, there should be mixed use component, residential and biz- and commercial business. So mixed use is in there, which is a combination of, uh.
Is there a guideline for open space?
We're not, we're not shooting for that goal in this case, you know, here, but what I'm getting at is that if it is a mixed use section, which is good for the economy because it gives you that flexibility, that it could be residential, could be commercial, you know, as the market changes, uh, so.
It is a, it is a tiny downtown with residential surrounding it all, so it's not like you're standard, it's not like you're looking at Boston and trying to get thirty percent of the GFA of Boston.
What's the smallest town that has instituted Form Based Code?
I don't know, Littleton, Littleton maybe.
I think Rock, doesn't Rockport have a little hybrid?
They have a small section by the train station.
Yeah, they have a hybrid code there. So that's it, Rockport's teeny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, not sure.
If I could make one comment about, I have the PowerPoint in front of me and that is that Hamilton developed, if you look at this, actually what's on the screen, you can see that Hamilton developed with lots of little individual buildings, right? There's almost no connected buildings anywhere. There's almost no connected buildings anywhere in there. And that was because there was nothing but a frigging train stop for many years. And, but it's true, even if you look at, I spent a lot of time recently in Lexington. All of the connected buildings in the downtown of Lexington are new. I don't know whether they were done with form-based code or not, but they're brand-new. The original downtown of Lexington was lots of little individual buildings, stores not connected. Whereas most of the plan that's in front of me suggests larger connected structures with many stores. And then to keep density even, you have lots of public area. Whether it's public parking or whether it's, it's, it's public open space. It's not a lot of individually situated structures. It's connected larger structures with public area around them.
I'm, I'm not sure where you're seeing that, because I don't think UTIL is recommending that. I think they're very specific about separate.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying what I see.
Where, where do you see that? What slide?
The form-based code basics, power PowerPoint. There's types of street frontage.
So let's go to that, can you tell us what slide and we'll go there?
Is it on this slide?
It's two or three slides beyond this.
Okay. Let's, let's look at that.
This one?
Yeah, yeah, these and the next cop, couple. There were their, their schematics that are 3D.
Okay, you want to look at this one?
This one or the, or you keep on going. The one that has a very large area.
Yeah, they're, that's probably a Depot Square.
Those are, you know, they're.
Well, let's look at any one of these, Bill. So they, they chose different streets. This is Bay Road.
Right, right.
They took a sample lot on Bay Road and said, this is the configuration. This was an attempt to kind of establish a character in the downtown. And this is a big, a way to start to grapple with what would a few more buildings look like in a downtown and how would you build them? And they were pretty conscious about attaching buildings. And the only place was Depot Square and they were hit pretty hard with the advisory committee by, by attaching buildings. Now, and it was, it was too dense a development. So I think they're reacting to that at this point. But there are really no attached buildings that are planned.
What is, what is the plan that looks like it's for Depot Square?
Oh, that, yeah, that one was pretty intense.
It was, that was just too much.
Has that been discarded?
This is it here.
Yeah.
That's the one with all the.
This is the one back in early December, yeah.
Yeah, and right, right out of the gate, the first time that was ever seen by anyone, it was criticized, so.
That's what I worry about. I worry about them coming in and just overdoing it.
Now, this is why, what they're trying to do is establish drawings like this to say, okay, can you envision, envision this now? Well, not, if you were to change this in a way that you would like it.
Right.
That's a vision of what you want it. Now they can code it and that's the way it works. So the idea is to create a vision of what you would like to see in a downtown and then code it so that's the way it's built.
We could lean into this slide, and this is the one that we left off with when we started the workshop last time. And we started with these conversations. And if I can sort of recap from memory and people, please correct me if I'm wrong. What we, what we established in looking at this slide is we said it didn't make sense for buildings to be along the railroad. That was number one. Number two, the buildings shouldn't be so big and close together and they shouldn't be touching. That was number two. And number three, we talked about making sure that they're thinking about what's across the street from each of these, these configurations. You've got Cumberland Farms across the street on Walnut Street. And you have, you have the backside of things on, on Bay Road, on the other side of the railroad tracks sort of abutting this. And then you have the, the railroad side of Bay Road. And that was the third thing, was to look at this in context with the things that were across the street. That's where we left off. And what we could do is we could, we could formalize those comments and make sure that they're, they're stated the way we want to state them and then get them to UTIL. That's the next step. So that's what we're trying to do tonight, is these very, very specific and actionable comments. So, so with those three points, were those three points off-base in any way, what I said? If they weren't off-base, let's capture them.
If you look on the right-hand side, it said, do these principles sound right guiding Depot Square development? And number one, Jonathan, you want to read these or?
Yeah, emulate Railroad Avenue frontage along rail line along Walnut Road. And the answer would be no, not, not along the railroad, so.
Along rail, but along Walnut.
But along Walnut, yes. But it says along rail line and then along, so, so the first part, no, second part, yes.
Yes.
So how do we want to do this? Do we want to, somebody take notes, do it from the video? Again, this is to be actionable, not just confetti in the wind. Can somebody take, take notes while we do this?
Sure.
Great, okay. So, so we could use this, this is slide number what?
Page 18.
Eighteen.
Page 18. And under the questions, so question one, we're saying, yes, emulate Railroad Avenue. However, those are detached buildings, not attached buildings. And, and emulate it along Walnut Road, not along the rail frontage. So that's number one.
Should we say?
Everybody agree with that?
Yes, but should we say both sides of Walnut Road?
Well, we're going to get to the, we're missing context. We're missing, you got to look across the street. This is, this organized by street frontage. Well, street frontage has two sides. There's two sides to every street. We shouldn't be looking at these, I feel, we shouldn't be looking at these lot by lot. We should be looking at these in context, always across the street and adjacent. What's the relationship between them? That's how, if you organize by frontage, that's how you're looking at it. That's not how the slide is presented.
Right, so that's why I asked, because right now it's the south side of Walnut. We haven't talked about the north side of.
Right.
I'm not sure, is, is, is starting with the expectation that it matches railroad? I mean, why do we have to match, why can't it be something different than railroad?
Well, we could talk about that.
Because railroad also has two sides of the road. And it's a one-way street. Walnut's a two-way, three-way, that's a through-way that connects towns and railroad avenues, not that. So I don't know why I would want to match railroad.
If I can answer that, I think the reason was that the, it, it wasn't so much, create a replica of railroad, but look at the, what railroad does as a concept, you know, where you have buildings very tight together, very close by. They're all maybe one, two-story height, something like that.
It encourages you to get out of your car and walk.
They sit on the sidewalk and what they do is, it's, it's a strong retail part of town. You're not looking across a lawn at a store. The, the building is right up on the street. And that's what they're, they were talking about in replicating here. Get, get something right on the sidewalk so that there is, there's a human-scale presence there that can be dealt with.
I think it'd be more helpful if we specified it in that way, rather than referring to, it's a more subjective, if you say, make it look like Railroad Avenue. It's more specific and probably a lot more beneficial for them if we repeat what you just said.
We could give the re, we could give the reason.
It's kind of a shorthand, though, in talking. We'd say, make it look like railroad means the characteristics of railroad.
Railroad was used as sort of the gold standard for walkable retail neighborhoods.
But I think we should bulletize that, not, you know, specifically.
We can, we can do that. They know that, but we can say that, we can reinforce it. So you want to start with that? We think that Railroad Avenue is a good standard for a walkable, Hamilton-scaled, cohesive retail center. Yes, is that a true statement, false statement?
Well, it was also deemed a historic, but it had, is a historic aspect to it. It really is neat. And, you know, buildings maybe be pre-1940 or something.
That doesn't mean it's going to be one-way. It just means that the buildings are going to hold the street and encourage you to park your car and go for, go to more than the one building.
I'd like to see a little more green along the road than what railroad does.
I think we're going to talk about that in a minute. But interestingly enough, though, the characteristics of railroad also go around the corner along Bay Road where the post is and the beauty shop and all the way down to the gas station. It's, that, that holds the downtown.
Right, and then it completely falls apart across Bay Road, where you have multiple curb cuts, cars backing across sidewalks, things like that. And that's what, that's what form-based code can, can fix over time, long game.
Right.
Is avoid those sorts of things. So, okay, so then let's, we just need to focus, we either need to go through the questions and answer the questions or we, we should give general comments. But I just want to stay focused so we can capture this stuff.
Right.
So can we go through the questions?
Yeah.
And, okay, so emulate Railroad Avenue. I, we can say what, what's desirable about Railroad Avenue, but I think they're, they've done a good job of establishing why that Railroad Avenue is, is, works as a retail, walkable, safe retail center. So I don't think we have to itemize those bullet points, we can.
You might just put it in parentheses.
Yes.
Just in parentheses.
Okay. And then, so the second part of that, well, the first part, not along railroad, the railroad line itself, but yes, along Walnut Road.
Right.
So we'll do the second question and we'll, and anything that's missing here at the end, we can add in as a bullet point.
I'm not sure I agree with Walnut.
Okay.
I agree with, I don't think I agree with Walnut.
So then, then you, then, then there's nothing there that you want to be holding the street.
It's like the, it's like the, it's like the short L of a long L. And it connects to the residential area. And it's kind of like, it's on the other side of the highway, a state highway. And it's on a, it's on a busy street, like it's not, it's not the quaint, it's not the downtown. It's like an edge of the downtown that connects.
It, it could be. And the other thing that it does is it, it hides the parking lot.
Right.
It hides the parking lot.
That's the key thing.
So you actually hit, you hit it absolutely laser precisely just now by saying, by commenting on that, because it, it is not a desirable place to be. It's not, it feels like the edge of something. It feels like you wouldn't want to get out of your car and walk around there. In fact, people get in their car and they drive from a parking space adjacent to Walnut Street in Cumberland Farms. They get in their car and they drive across the street and park 30 feet away. They drove 30 feet to park in another space on Walnut Street on the other side of the street. I do it myself, I see other people do it. Your mission in good down planning is to prevent that. If you have to get in your car to move from one adjacent building to another, you've failed in your downtown planning, in my opinion. And that's why this area fails. And it's why it doesn't feel like Railroad Avenue. And you have the opportunity to manipulate that. You have the opportunity to, when Cumberland Farms, if Cumberland Farms ever changes, you have the opportunity for that to be different. And when Crosby's, you know, Hamilton Crossing ever changes, if it gets redeveloped, you have the opportunity to do something different along those, along that street and actually hold the street. So it's a pleasant place to walk around.
So is the intent of, of the, of the buildings on Walnut Road to hold the street and hide the driveway? I can't see anybody walking out of any one of those buildings on Walnut and trying to get across that insane intersection.
Well, if there were, if there were other buildings across the way that were valuable to get to and you had safe crosswalks, which again, there aren't there right now, that's, that's the mission.
But that's indicative of the, of the, of the traffic pattern design there, not the road, the buildings that hold the road.
Well, you can, you can control where your crosswalks go. Right now, there, I don't think there are any crosswalks there. And if there is a crosswalk, it's, it's across four, I think, four lanes of traffic. You have a right-turn lane by Cumberland Farms and you have a left turn.
Yeah, it's right.
It's four lanes of traffic at the cross point there.
Just a couple of that quick, now we got to get through this.
Yes.
You asked for questions and comments.
Yeah, you said, no questions dumb, so go through them.
Now, a part, another desirable part about railroad is it's an activated street. You look at, you know, you go by the pizza shop, you go by the post office and other, you know, animal plays and whatever. You look in the windows, you look, you know, check it out and look it in. That's what happens here along Walnut.
No, but there's no, on Road Avenue. We're questioning whether or not you should have that, is what, is the question.
Well.
Whether or not that is an appropriate.
Nobody uses Railroad Avenue to get somewhere other than those stores.
Yeah.
This Walnut is, is an access road to the other side of town.
The idea is to change it. We're trying to improve walkability so when you walk through Hamilton, the whole length of it, you have something to look at and it's comfortable.
I think we should go for, but I think we should just have as a consideration off to the side. We're, we're questioning whether or not Walnut is appropriate because of the nature of the road and where it directs.
Well, plus you have the train coming in as well as all the traffic.
That was just something, I think, we should go through the questions.
Well, yeah, there's an existing commercial.
Right.
One of the things we started off with.
Development there now. So it, it's not like that is going to go away. It will, it can be reimagined in a better way. Instead of having, you know, all the buildings in the back with a big parking lot, you can have some of the buildings in the front, you know, and, and more greenery around.
But you're doing that on the, I, I don't want to belabor it, but you're doing it on the hopes that you get some commercial walkability across Walnut. I don't think it's a reasonable road to cross at any point. It's a major through-way. It makes a lot more sense to me to keep the railroad along the rail line and keep that out. Because this is, that is like the backside of downtown, like off Walnut, park off Walnut and then walk across the rail to the connected downtown maybe. Why wouldn't you have buildings along the rail?
Well, one principle, one principle in, in good, in good town planning, for any active retail center or downtown, is a double-loaded street is more active than a single-loaded street. Meaning if you have streets, if you have buildings that hold the street line and.
Both sides.
On both sides and things to look at, to Amel's point, in the windows and buildings close enough together, not necessarily touching, but close enough together so you're comfortable getting out of your car once and visiting four or five buildings, that activates a downtown. When you have a single-loaded street, meaning you have retail just on one side and then nothing on the other side, like a parking lot or a field or, you know.
Cumberland Farms.
Cumberland Farms, then you've got a single-loaded street and it's, it's to be, it's less active. You're less likely to stay out of your car for, for a few more minutes and go to more buildings. So that's, that's sort of a really basic principle of town planning, so.
Isn't, isn't that what happens at Hamilton Crossing? People don't get in their car and go to one part of the shopping center to the other. No, they walk.
They walk across the rail.
They, they walk across or they walk under the onings and they do all of that there.
Yes, but the.
There's a cool opportunity on the other side of the rail, too. Like that area should be, and the only parking.
Where like the liquor stores and Talbets and stuff, we run the others?
Athletic area is the little diner back there and, yeah, where the liquor store is and where the offices for.
That's Wenham.
That's Wenham.
300 Main is in Wenham. But Talbets and the liquor store are in Hamilton.
Yes, they are.
And those are the areas where there's, there's very significant sidewalk safety issues on Bay Road. Very significant sidewalk safety issues.
We kind of jumped in at the, at the end of what they were doing, this development, which is really tricky and you have to understand a lot about it, why, why was it, why was it done this way? What are all the char, what are the trade-offs you have?
Yeah.
Maybe we should start off with.
Something easier.
The, like the, the street layout in the whole downtown. Let's look at, let's look at why Bay Road.
Do we want to finish the questions here or no?
Well, let's finish the questions.
Okay.
Because.
Well, but, so we don't have consensus, though, on whether to emulate Railroad Avenue on the Walnut Road frontage.
We may have consensus. I, I understand the rationale for that.
What Jonathan described.
You have to remember, this is over time. This isn't going to just happen, you know, the minute the form-based code comes into effect. It's a vision of how it might look in 15 years or thereabouts. And then, and, and the, the missing piece that we'll get to is the Cumberland Farms. And, you know, and, and in part of all this, you have all these traffic calming mechanisms that can be put into place that, that can help pedestrians cross Bay Road and navigate.
And Walnut Street.
Walnut Street, yeah. I mean, you don't actually have to cross right at Walnut Street. I mean, it could be moved down a little bit and made safer.
There's actually a, Amel, if you, can you go back to what, what?
What slide shows this, this alignment here? Because that's key, because it has nothing to do with.
It's a tough thing to answer because we're only looking at the stamp, the posted stamp.
And that's, that's the biggest, to me, the biggest issue, and I started to mention it, is each lot has to be looked at in context. It can't be looked at in isolation. And all of these, these slides are showing typical frontage and typical lots in isolation. And I just finished talking about the fact that good, a basic of good town planning is double-loaded streets.
Right.
So you have to understand what's across the street. And if you draw it and conceive it and code it in posted stamp isolation, I don't think that's good comprehensive planning.
Well, I think that's why we got stuck.
Yes, and, and, and so I'm jumping around here a little bit, but let's go back to this here.
I like this one, it has a good starting point because it, it talks about the streets.
So, Amel, can you, um, point to that, that, I, I pointed to the, the opening, the alley, the entrance between the buildings, so now, that's right there. Okay, so that lines up with the gas right-of-way greenway.
Right here.
And could also line up with other pedestrian or internal parking corridors that could connect, make connectivity in a safe location away from the railroad crossing, away from the chaos of the intersection, if that's the major crossing. Right now, that's where people get in their car and drive thirty feet from parking space to parking space, it doesn't need to be that way.
This was something that came out of the advisory committee, and the idea was, uh, one of the principles was walkability cohesive, cohesiveness and so forth, and so the idea was, uh, this is a former railroad right-of-way, it goes right up to Myopia, and I'm not sure it goes beyond then, there, but it's right up behind Winthrop School. The idea here was to, would, uh, that line, we're not gonna build a road on it, but you could do a road parallel to it, but you could make that a greenway, you could make that a walkway, so that if you wanted to walk around your downtown.
Bike path?
Bike path, so you're off the streets, you're off the traffic, you, you would be, uh, you could actually navigate that whole backside of, of, um, Hamilton.
Right.
And what's interesting, if you walk that, is how deep these lots are between Bay Road. Right-of-way, so you could actually get maybe some, uh, even retail businesses perhaps along if that. That are, so you could have a building on the front of the lot, up on Bay, and maybe one on the back and get parking in the center.
And that parking could be shared front to back, it could also be shared lot to lot.
Correct, right.
So that then it starts to solve the conundrum of where do you put parking in Hamilton, there's no central parking, but if you start creating cluster parking, especially in some of these deeper lots, and you, and folks sort of, uh, cooperate with one another about, um, uh, shared parking lots and shared connections between parking lots, you start to have, uh, a, uh, a safer way to, to have retail along the, um, Bay Road and engage those deeper lots.
Actually exists at the Honeycomb now.
Yes, yes, but not, not in a very organized way for pedestrians.
No, but I mean, in terms of sha- uh, shared parking.
Yes, that's an example of shared parking, it's just an example where the pedestrian has sort of been relegated below the, the convenience of the cars.
Right.
And you can control that in form-based code, you can make sure that there's, there's, the pedestrian is considered in all of these things.
One, one of the folks on the advisory committee was, I guess he's the chair of the Historic District Commission. Yeah, 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 neat guy, a lot of information, he showed us some pictures of old Bay Road. And it was tree-lined, uh, trees that are long gone. But one of the ideas was, at one point, that was a pretty scenic corridor.
Beautiful, remember the pictures, it was absolutely stunning.
Would be possible for us to kind of bring that back, so right through the middle of town, especially along the east side right here, along the east side, make that more comfortable walking area, so you could actually walk up a long Bay Road and maybe there'd be street trees there or shade from the tree plantings, cause those buildings are set back twenty, thirty feet off the, uh, off the street, these buildings. And the idea was to keep these as sort of models of what, what the character is in all downtown. Again, the historic history, the idea is to respect the history and, uh, use it in a way that maybe, not exactly replicate buildings, but, um, the scale is interesting, the, the, not so much, it's not from a stylistic standpoint, but it's more of what's the space between the buildings, what is the massing of the buildings, how does it feel generally? Is it crowded, is it not crowded, whatever? And so, one of the key things there was to create this scenic drive on Bay Road right up to that point. With this being the major intersection here with Walnut down at the bottom. So this dash green line was actually a driveway or a road that goes right through and it connects with Carriage. So you could have parking along that, parking lots. This road would be a continuation maybe out to, to Bay, uh, from a road right along the rail, the old rail line right here. So, Carriage Lane is not a dead end anymore, it actually is a, a through road that goes, so you can actually get, you can get through the whole town without going onto Bay Road, the idea being relieve some of the traffic that does all have to wind up on that, Bay Road, because that's just the way it is.
Didn't we agree in our last meeting to not include that area in the downtown district?
What?
That little area that's being.
That dead-end road.
Carriage.
Carriage Lane.
Yep, we agreed not to include it, right?
Yeah.
Not to include it where, in the downtown?
Into the downtown district zoning. That was a conversation we had and we agreed not to do it. We agreed to, the other little pocket, uh, on the other side, we agreed to include, but not that.
Cummings is over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we agreed to include that, but not what we're referring to now.
Yeah, yeah.
And are you saying a road along that, all the way along that greenway?
Well, that was talked about, you know, whether, whether there's, there'll be a road, UTIL is not showing that, this came out of the advisory committee. Again, the idea to have more connectivity from north to south and.
What's interesting is the greenway is surrounding a public safety building, a school, residential areas, and really nothing that you'd wanna, is it, you know what I mean, the downtown is on the other side of the highway.
I think it's more to walk from downtown to like Patton Park.
That was the idea, is to get to Patton, to have, to have ways to get to Patton Park. Um, and that came up over and over in the advisory committee, cause people said that they don't like walking down Bay Road to get from downtown to Patton Park or from Pingree Park to Patton Park, and they always use some back road or back route to get there. And it's very difficult.
Remember in the master plan, which we'll talk about later, hopefully, um, there was an emphasis on, um, bike paths. And so this, you know, this would definitely lend itself to a bike path to enable people to get to the train station and, uh, and also not have to ride their boats, bikes on Bay Road, which, in my humble opinion, would be just as dangerous as dri- taking your bike into downtown Boston.
Didn't we just say the east side of this road, we'd like to make tree-lined once again and more walkable?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that negate the need for that wraparound behind the utilities building?
It's, it's still just a nice thing.
I think it's different.
You don't put a bike on a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not, the greenway wouldn't be paved.
No, stays the way it is, but it would be marked better at the entrance, right?
High-pressure, uh, gas line.
Yes, right, right now, it's sort of a secret at the entrance, you don't know it's there unless you're, you have local knowledge.
Right.
And if you line it up with, with another pedestrian connection, if you line it up with, um, something that invites pedestrian movement in and out of Hamilton Crossing, then it becomes more, um, visible and usable and more people will know about it.
I think the folks from Ledger, the, the horse farm on Walnut Street used to use that to get to, uh, the schooling field at Myopia. I never knew where it was.
Cause the scope of what they're doing for form-based code does not include the residential areas surrounding downtown. It's whatever we're encompassing within, if we're not including Carriage Road into what we're considering to be zoning for downtown, which I think we should not still, we should draw a line around that to define a hard boundary for the scope of what they're doing in the next phase of this, right?
Well, this map shows what they were, consider the colored parts of this are the, uh.
But they're drawing stuff in two, where two.
Right.
Where it's hatched.
Right.
Is not part of the scope of what we're proposing to do.
But what I would say to you is if you wanna keep it small houses, then you code it that way.
But why would you need to code it that way, because it's already.
Because it will change.
It's like, why would you?
Because you'll get developers coming in and buying up three or four or five, six lots, that's why.
Unless you code it, that's right, and.
That's why I worry about predatory developers.
But like, would you need to do that with the residential area around Walnut Road then to Union Street? Like, where do you, we have to at some point draw a boundary to what there's, the scope of their effort is. And so if we wanna draw it where the black line is and code the hatched area as residential.
Well, I think, I think what we talked.
Can I ask what you think the estimate of the acreage is of these four areas, one, two, three, four?
Fifteen acres.
What are we looking at?
Fifteen, you said?
Fifty?
Is it between like twelve and fifteen acres, something like that?
Well, Winthrop, what, six?
Winthrop is fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah, so that gives you a sense.
So, so three is five acres roughly, um.
What do you think?
Right now, the business district is about either twenty-five or so, twenty-five.
How much?
Twenty-five acres, I believe, now, that's everything, it's from railroad right up to.
So it's, it's the three zones that are here, that are identified, everything.
Yeah, yeah, the, the only thing that's additional is that right now, Carriage Lane is not part of the business district, it's residential.
But Cummings is.
Cummings is, so that should.
Cummings is part of the.
So I think what we talked about last time was that Carriage could be left off, um, as mixed use or commercial and just be residential, but if something in the future changed with the Winthrop School, you could revisit that. You know, if you wanted, if you wanted some sort of connectivity and continuity through there, if Winthrop School became something else, um, not that we're promoting that, but if it did, then, then Carriage Lane takes on a different complexion um, and becomes actually, uh, an interesting way to again, support the connectivity along the greenway, on the, on the gas right-of-way, and loop the greenway around either through the civic center or if the Winthrop School became something else, and really make a stronger connection to Patton Park. But that's if, you know, and, and the idea here is again, to, to plan it out so that if something changes, you can, you can respond to it, change the code accordingly.
Could, could we talk about Cumberland Farms and, and the, um, like the scenic corridor along Bay Road? How, how that Cumberland Farm site, which theoretically should be the other side of the street to provide the, the anchoring that you were talking about, but how, how, um, that site can be integrated with the scenic.
Develop.
They, they need to develop that, they need to, to look at that.
They need to develop it, they had originally, uh, placed it like, um, like the Depot, Depot Square, you know, make it the same sort of thing. But, I know part of the advisory committee was, it seemed to relate to more people, to Walnut, uh, to, um, Bay Road.
Than Walnut.
Than Walnut, and see, this is.
But it's an, it's an important corner and it's an important sort of node downtown.
Talking about this piece right here.
Yeah.
Where the gas station is.
Yeah.
And the thought was, if this is a green walkway along there, the transition is right at Walnut, then now this becomes more dense, more railroad-like, and here, it's all existing. The railroad is the red line here. But the thought was that this corner, it, maybe there could have been a, it could be a green in here or there could be a, you know, a small pocket park that's significant, it could demarcate, be a focal point in the downtown, but, but not to build this up commercially too much. One of the things I personally would, don't wanna, would not like to see is a lot of retail along Bay Road because it's an, it's a lot of traffic on that road, it's a wide road, so you, you, do you want people really running back and forth across that shopping like that? I, I think you have to be careful, cause that, again, that's a historic, I think, uh, picturesque kind of road. And that's what we're trying to return it to, not really a high commercial.
And I think UTIL has been, um, resonant with that.
Yeah.
And, and then, if there is any, uh, development to it, it would be the deeper lots, buildings behind, parking behind and connectivity behind, so you're not encouraging, um, a lot of crossing of Bay Road.
The other thing is reducing curb cuts.
Yes, reducing the number of.
That's why.
Yes.
Access in the rear is important, uh, like a lane or a real, rear alley to get to the back for parking, to minimize roads, driveways going in off Bay.
Right.
Well, that makes perfect sense, and then, and, uh, of course, if there were, were to be buildings in the rear of those lots, um, they could have the scale of, you know, small barns or.
Yeah, right.
Uh, outbuildings that would be consistent with some of the vernacular type architecture that exists on Bay Road now.
And that's why you're seeing some of those.
Sort of like the Honeycomb.
Yeah.
You know, you know, the behind, and, and I don't know what that, uh, building was originally used for. It used to be a caterer, but I mean, originally.
Hungry Fox was there.
Yeah, but what was it originally?
I don't remember.
It, it looks like a carriage house or something.
Maybe.
But the building in front where the Castle Law Firm is.
Used to be a Realtor's office.
Yeah, but that looks like a bungalow kind of, uh, a craftsman-style.
Yeah.
House, so what happened there?
I don't know.
How did that develop?
So this is an example of the Bay Road, um, mixed use here, again, this is Bay, Bay Road right here. Uh, and these are either existing buildings or similar to it in architecture. And I get the parking behind here, and if this is the bikeway along, greenway along the back where the railroad crossing is or right-of-way, uh, there could be a building that fronts that, so you have something to look at if you're going down that trail, so it's not so dark and, uh, abandoned. But perhaps a building there and then parking in the center, that could be shared parking if it could cross property lines. Uh, so that would be central to the whole downtown, so you, you could theoretically park there and walk anywhere within fifteen minutes, so.
And mixed use in the sense that the bottom floor would be retail and top floor would be condos or something?
Establish however you want that to be, it could be exclusively commercial retail on the ground floor, residential up above, or it could be a work-live kind of, live-work kind of setup where you, you know, if you have a shop, you could live upstairs and have your office in the bottom.
And we're gonna be asked to weigh in on those things, cause there will be a chart of uses that are permissible in these. So you'll, you'll be looking at like Bay Road mixed use and you'll, you'll have to respond to the chart of, of permitted uses.
So, maybe one suggestion going back to where we're having trouble with these, like, two specific little posted stamp. Can we get the, these images applied to the overall plan so that we can react to the connectedness of them and provide, I guess, could that be a request we make of UTIL?
Here, here.
We've been asking for that for a long time.
Long time.
Okay.
What, what we, what the advisory committee did early on was actually do an illustrative plan of the entire downtown. So you look at every single parcel and say, well, if you were to code it this way, we're, you, you then get a sense really of how much you can actually build out the downtown or not.
And how things connect or don't connect.
So, on that April first meeting we're trying to have with them, do you think we could ask?
We've sent them.
Between now and then, we get that plus coded potential uses that we can then edit in our recommendations?
Yeah, I, I, we need uses, absolutely by then. They, they should have the first draft completed, which means everything they're going to do will be there. We've been pushing for the illustrative plan, I don't think we're gonna get the illustrative plan that we did in the advisory committee, but they're gonna do, um, they haven't even shown us the regulating plan, which is a street layout, which is a map that goes with all codes.
Yeah.
So, uh, cause they were working on other things, so they, they.
You've, you've indicated you've, you've asked for quite some time, I'm curious if you have a sense as why you've not received it. Is it amount of time and resource to get it done, or is it just that they don't have that prioritized because they're being led by somebody else?
No, I, I don't think they're being led by anybody, I'm not sure why they're not, uh, I, they're using their own judgment, maybe they disagree with those things, but they've been, these items, in fact, this whole, this whole drawing, uh.
That's confusing to me, you saying that they're, they're just driving their.
Well, I don't know, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus or anything, I'm just saying that, you know, this is, uh, it's been a slow process from the beginning for a lot of reasons, and, uh.
So somebody's a primary stakeholder, right, can't we just talk to that person? And I assume it's the town manager and say, we've been asking for this, what's the.
This was the drawing that we really pushed, uh, that was kind of a result of the, cause what it does is identify different streets by character and you, you don't know that, looking at this, but that is what they, we, we were insisting that they organize, you need an organizing feature for your downtown, it should be streets in this case, and streets, streets have frontages. There's an entrance to the building and it could be a courtyard, it could be a stoop, it could be any number of things. It could be a gallery type thing, so there, there are at least eight or, eight or ten different types of frontages. If you had a restaurant, you might wanna patio out there to eat, and, but that's what you, for each street, you would say, these are the frontages you can have on that street, the ground floor must be retail or commercial. The upper floors could be residential or they could be office, they're mixed use, so they could vary. And, um, now, and the building footprint, no larger than five thousand square feet as a building footprint, which means you could theoretically have maybe multiple buildings on, but they're all small buildings. which means you could theoretically have maybe multiple buildings on, but they're all small buildings. And, um, that's, that's the concept they're trying to put together. But what we have to do in a very short period of time is to take what, the, the previous slide that had really an individual parcel drawn with a couple of buildings on it, and parking, and so forth. We have to look at the code they're creating. They're gonna use that as a sample, and essentially, if you replicate that down the street, that's, that's what a built-out downtown will look like, plus or minus. Not, it, th- these are not, these are diagrams that are intended to suggest a layout. They'll, will establish stepbacks, they'll establish heights, uh, building footprints, where parking has to be on that lot, so parking is not right on the front lawn. So all of those things get established within the code. And, uh, one of the things in that table is will be a use. These are the uses on the first floor, these are the uses on the second floor.
Kind of like we did with the Gordon Carnwell.
Yeah, exactly. That's what we did there. And so that, that's the, the kind of thing that they're heading toward now. And that's what they're starting to produce at this point.
But I think what we can, the, the board itself can recommend as a group that we see these lots more in context and less in isolated lots. And we see a map with the, the, um, the frontage type, types clearly delineated.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We sent out a letter early this week to them again, so next meeting...
But this, this now could be from the board as a whole.
Right, right, absolutely.
Yeah. So, Mark, Mark, you got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, um, it's, um...
I'm, I'm stuck by one other thing here, which is all the conversation this evening really has focused on commercial. And I know we're trying to keep this separate from 3A, but 3A doesn't give a hoot about commercial. Right? They're not trying to develop our retail district here, and make it a wonderful place to come and visit and shop, and go out to dinner. They want seven hundred housing units. And it doesn't matter whether it's five hundred housing units or three hundred housing units. Their focus is on residential, and all the conversation here this evening is about commercial. And, so maybe we should also tell them that, I mean, I don't think 3A is gonna go away. I don't know how it's gonna get resolved, but the state wants more affordable housing near public transportation. And that's not what we're doing here tonight. We're trying to make a nice little retail area. And so, perhaps we should think a little more about devoting, you know, a larger amount of, of design to...
Exclusively residential as opposed to...
To, to residan-dancial, yeah.
But we haven't talked about all the areas, we haven't talked about all the frontage types, we haven't talked about Willow Street. And many of those, if we get through all of them, it's just, we started late. If we get through all of them, we'll be able to say, this area is better for residential, this area is better for mixed-use, this bet, area is better for retail. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Well, the, the mixed-use really does address the residential aspect of things.
Right, but there might be areas where it's only residential, but we haven't gotten through all the areas yet.
And so Willow Street, obviously, where Dodge Tree is and Walton Lamson, that, that, that's, that's where you would conceivably have your, primary, um, use residential.
Yeah.
So, um, I, 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 we've made some progress, I hope. Do we, do we, do you think we've made some progress? We have more work to do, but I think, uh, our next discussion can be a little more focused now that we agree. If we continue to identify these different areas with the understanding that we wanna see this cohesive, uh, code based on, uh, the streets that we're looking at right here.
Yep, not lot by lot, but street by street.
Right, exactly.
Always looking across the street.
Exactly. So, um, I think, uh, uh, unless anybody wants to continue this, we could, um, look at the next items on our agenda. So, March twelfth, we will have the public hearing on our zoning bylaw amendments. And for your edification, uh, the, uh, FinCom has asked me to appear at their meeting tomorrow night to go over our bylaw amendments with them. And, um, uh, obviously, their, um, mission is to determine whether or not any of our amendments will have, um, any impact on, um, the tax rate for the citizens of Hamilton. And, uh, that's their determination, but I don't believe that any of our suggested amendments, uh, would affect the tax rate. But, again, that's their determination. So, um, then...
I, I just wanna say, um, and, and this is a living document, so if we find we've made some errors, we can always go back and change it. So nothing's like, it's not like we're committing ourselves to something that's going to...
It's a bylaw.
Yeah.
It's a bylaw. It can be changed, exactly, yeah.
So I, that was another...
Yeah, absolutely.
It's relatively easy to change.
Right, yeah. And, and you never know what the future holds. I mean, really, you don't. It's, it, it's hard to predict. And, and you know, you look at parts of Boston, uh, uh, they were derelict, the South End. And now, good luck affording a condo on the South End. So, you know, things do change, even, even small towns. I mean, Newbury Port, why is Newbury Port so lovely? Nothing happened there. It was, it was a wasteland. Nobody even bothered to tear down the historic buildings. And lo and behold, it's, there they are. And Newbury Port is one of the loveliest communities, um, in Massachusetts. So, um, never say never. Uh, I almost hate to, to go to item B. Where is our master plan?
So here's what I would propose. Um, I've spent quite a bit of time in Emil, or Am- Amel has most recently spent time in it, and, um, he's agreed to come in tomorrow and work with me on it. I think we're very close. And what I'd like to do is just send it out to you on Friday and have everyone look at it. And if you don't think we're close, and you think it's a disaster, we can, we can, um, bring in a professional to, to finish it off. But, um, I think, you know, we've spent a lot of time with it and a lot of frustration. And I think having us in the same room would just help work out the, the last remaining thing, so that would be my proposal.
Is it just a formatting issue at this point? Is it just...
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, um, the Word versions, I think, it can look different on my screen than it is someone else's, and that's very frustrating. So, because I think I fixed something, and then Amel will say, well, it looks bad on my screen, so then you're just sort of...
I thought a few meetings ago, you had indicated, just allocate a few hundred bucks to find somebody to fix it.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I talked to Joe about it, and he's, you know, he wants to see if we can, he wants to give us...
It's a management issue. Let's put it that way. And it's not being managed properly.
He wants to see if we can, uh, get one last crack at it.
Yeah, well, take one, take it, one more shot. And I have absolutely no clue why, you know, a Word document would look one way on one computer and one way on another. It, it's, um, but yeah, one more shot, and then, and I, I think we need a hard deadline.
Yeah, I do too, for sure.
What's a hard deadline?
Thirty days?
No, I was thinking March fifteenth.
Oh, two, two weeks. I like that. I like that even better.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
What is that? What is the date?
Our next meeting is March twelfth. I mean, I think we have to light a fire.
Yes, I do too.
It's a bonfire, too.
But didn't we do our job? We proposed it to the select board to be implemented, and they agreed it should be implemented. Isn't, isn't the job done?
We approv- we approved it on August eighth. I sent a letter to Joe before Mark came on board on October twenty-second and said, let's get this done. Uh, I know Rosie is on this, Bill Wilson is on this. I mean, let's get this done.
Yeah.
We approved it.
He's refusing to do what he's been asked to do.
But we're, but we can't do it for that. We, our job is done.
Yeah.
Our job is done. I don't know why it has to come back. We've done our job. We've, we've done all, we actually went beyond it. I mean, you guys did...
Yeah.
You did all the work. You guys had done a ton of it.
I, I think we should probably write a letter to put some pressure on the town manager to do his job.
I mean, we put Mark in a tough spot, because you're in the middle, but I think we're done.
Why don't we write a letter to the select board?
Yes, because he answers to the select board if we put pressure on the select board. You know, people came out in bad weather. We begged them to come. It's a matter of trust at this point. When we ask people to show up, and they show up, and, and nothing's happening, it's, it's really very bad.
The, the thing that troubles me is, when I Google Town of Hamilton on my phone, not my computer, I don't know why there's a difference, but the master plan shows up. It's the draft that, that Barrett Planning did with the rusted historic district sign on the cover. Please. And so, uh...
We spent a lot of money on this.
Well, we spent a lot of time on it. We, the planning board as a whole did a lot of work on this.
Right. And the citizens even came. I mean, they're, and they're asking que- they're, you know, I'm getting questions.
We need it. You know what? That, that master plan would, would be helpful. You know, if, if we could have attached it as an exhibit or whatever, a link to it, when, uh, Joe sent a letter to the executive office, the comment period, documenting the extent of our, um, wetlands and steep slopes and whatnot. All of that's in the master plan.
Oh, right. Anyway.
They're asking when's it gonna get done, and they're asking us when's it gonna get done.
So, um, Darcy made a, a suggestion, and so, do we wanna write to the select board?
I make a motion?
I just suggest we wait until Friday, it's just two days away, and, and see what that version looks like. And if we don't like it, then we can...
Then at the next meeting, we'll do.
Why do we have to like what it looks like?
We, we want...
Do we have to like what it looks like?
Yeah, we want it to be perfect.
Okay.
Um, so, so, you know, let's get this done, because I wrote the, um, letter to the select board to form an implementation committee. And it's now getting harder and harder to find on my computer. What did I name that document? I mean...
Right, gotcha.
You follow me here?
I totally do.
What did I call that document? What was the date?
Yes, I understand.
So, we'll, Friday, oh, tomorrow, uh, Friday. Yes, it's coming right up.
Yes.
So, um, that, that's the end of our, um...
Well, shall I make a, a motion to adjourn?
You're so good at motions, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, when I call your name, uh, Bill?
Uh, approved.
He is so funny.
Pat?
Pat Norton, aye.
How long are we gonna switch?
Jonathan?
Jonathan, four, aye.
J, J O N T H O N. Beth?
Yeah, but, okay.
Darcy Dale, aye.
What other room?
August, aye.
And Marnik, aye.
What are we gonna do after the twelfth? We'll get this room on Tues- Tuesdays?
Good.